Welcome to the June 20, 2019 Planning Board meeting for the City of Nashua. A little bit unusual tonight, all of our officers are not present. Ours is a nine-member board. A quorum for our board is five people, which we have tonight. But I think it was prearranged through the Planning Department that they would ask me to chair this meeting and Ms. Harper to Secretary of the meeting. But I do think we need a motion from our board members for that to happen. So I would appreciate it if someone would just make a motion that under the circumstances where our officers are not here, that I chair the meeting tonight and then Ms. Harper be our secretary before we go any further.
I make a motion that Mr. Rapucci be the Chair and that Ms. Harper be the Secretary for tonight's June 20 meeting.
Thank you. Second to that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's done. So let's, I'll ask if you would take a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair, Adam Varley, Edward Weber, Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Mary Ann Malizagolja, Steve Ducrin.
Present.
Jerry Rapucci.
Present.
Maggie Harper. Present.
Okay. Thank you. We have a set of minutes. Do we do that next? Yeah. Do the minutes now. So we have a set of minutes from the June 6 meeting. Would anybody, did anybody have a chance to review them? And would anybody like to make a motion that the minutes be accepted? If not, we can put this on hold. Lieutenant.
I've reviewed the minutes from the last meeting of June 6 and would make a motion that they be accepted as drafted.
Second to that motion, Mr. Peterson?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's done. Communications, Mr. Houston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of Planning Board. If you turn to your packet, I'll quickly go over the items you received since your mailing went out. You have an amended agenda dated today with several postponements. The first one is case number one, Public Service Co. of New Hampshire and City of Nashua. That's been postponed to the July 11 meeting. And then all of your other business items, number two, three, and four, have also been postponed to the July 11 meeting. And you also have communications in your packet on those items. You have an item on case number one, which is the postponement of that from the applicant. On case number four, you have a communication from Fieldstone, which are some additional waivers that they're requesting for their case number four. And also there's a revised plan for that same case number four in your packet, 11 by And then you have a communication from Joe Mandola on case number six, which is the district, or we refer to as Oval. It's concerning engineering comments, revised engineering comments. And the two other communications deal with other business item number three and number four requesting postponement. And then lastly, you have a communication on, just information on housing advocate training, which is to be held on Monday, June 24, 2019. Here's in Nashville City Hall, an auditorium. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And then we would look for reports of chairs committees liaisons. Does anyone have anything to report to the board? Seeing nothing. Okay. We have, it looks to me like the applicants are here and we don't have any, anybody in the audience beyond that, but I'll still go through the procedures briefly. Tonight, what we have subdivisions as well as site plans. We'll consider whether or not they're ready to be taken off the table and for our consideration. Once we decide that and accept it, we'll move into the public hearing on the topic. During the public hearing, the applicant will have a chance to present their application. We'll also give the opportunity to the public to speak in favor or with questions or concerns about that application. Once that's completed, we'll close the public hearing and then we will open the public meeting. The public meeting is the session where the public observes us, however, doesn't participate. Our board then discusses the application and decides how we're going to proceed with it. Approved, denied, or table, or however we do that. We do ask, just in general terms, that even though the meeting closes, sometimes we do find it necessary to reopen the meeting. Sometimes we need a little bit more information than we got, that we realize in our discussion. So anybody who has an interest in a case, please stay until it's completely finished because it is possible that we would reopen the public hearing for a specific reason. I don't need to get into too much detail about how the people in opposition are in favor, how that process goes, because I don't see it happening tonight. If it comes up, we'll, I'll get into a little more detail with that. So with that, I think we will move to the first thing we're going to consider tonight, which is actually the first site plan. We have two applicants here tonight. One is, has three site plans and a subdivision before us. That's the Flatley Company. We're going to go with that first. And my understanding is correct, right? And please feel free to correct me if we have something out of the order that you expected. But I think we're going to start with new business site plan three, which is John J. Flatley Company, owner applicant and acceptance, application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR 2165 to show a lot line relocation. And then we'll go on to the second, to what's actually number five on our agenda, which is associated to this. And then we'll go to, over to the subdivision plan. And we're going to handle all four of these at the same time, I'm figuring, and then, you know, in a congruent way. And then we'll certainly make separate motions on the things, but that's the way we proceed. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You should probably accept jurisdiction of each of these cases first.
Exactly. Thank you. So somebody want to make a motion on the four Flatley applications or even just the first one? It's fine. It's ready for us to accept it.
I make a motion that we accept the applications.
Seconded?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're off on all four of your things before us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannan, Civil Engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 South Street in Bedford, New Hampshire. With me tonight is Kevin Walker with John Flatley Company. And we are before you this evening seeking approvals on four applications as Mr. Chairman explained. All of these applications are related to a proposed climate control self-storage facility that we're proposing in Gateway Hills. In order to create a separate parcel for the proposed facility, we've had to amanituate the existing site plans, subdivide a property, and then obtain the site plan approval for the proposed facility. As, sorry. Oops. Sorry.
If you don't mind, just introduce yourself again so that it gets on the record.
Sure. Good evening again, for the record. Chad Brannan, Civil Engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. As you have kind of announced or laid out, Mr. Chairman, the staff has asked us to address the site plan amendments first, followed by the subdivision request, and then the site plan approval that we're requesting for the climate control self-storage facility. So we'll start with the amended site plan application for Tax Map Parcel A-798. This parcel is part of the larger Gateway Hills, which is formerly known as the Nashua Technology Park. The John Flatley Company has acquired a number of parcels over the years, which now encompasses approximately 400 acres of contiguous land. The Gateway Hills is a mixed-use development property with professional offices, research and development buildings, retail space, a hotel, multifamily housing, and recreational spaces, as well as a number of site amenities. Servicing Gateway Hills is one public road known as Tara Boulevard and three private roads known as Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. This particular site plan amendment application proposes to reduce the size of the subject property by 1.104 acres from 129.729 acres to 128.625 acres. This new area will partially accommodate the proposed new climate control self-storage facility, and this application is simply for the movement of a lot line with a subdivision and site plan to follow. There are no changes proposed to the subject property, other than the size of the property itself. And as part of this application, we are requesting two waivers. One waiver from Section 190 282A regarding the drafting standards, as we do have a plan in the plan set that is smaller than a one-inch to 50-foot scale. And we're also requesting a waiver for locating all physical features within 1,000 feet of the subject property. So that's the first site plan amendment that we have before you. We have received the staff memo for this evening's meeting, and we do not object to any of the staff recommendations or findings.
Thank you.
I could go through the waiver requests if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, but I think there, those two are pretty straightforward.
Why don't we just touch on them if we need to, if somebody has a question or a concern about it? Yeah, I think you're testifying that they're all acceptable. Anybody have any questions?
I can go on to the next site plan amendment, or if you want to act on them individually?
How would it be better for you? What do you think is more fluent for you to present?
Well, we were asked to present them individually, but I'm happy to continue if the board wants to address them in the end.
Why don't you go ahead and give us a chance to listen to the whole?
Okay.
Thing, and then we'll consider them individually when it comes up to motions.
Sure. So the plan that's on the screen, I guess I should have touched on this, the yellow highlighted area is the area of Parcel A-798 that we're looking to take out and make part of a new lot that we're going to create when we get to the subdivision portion. The second site plan amendment that we have before you pertains to Tax Map Parcel A-713, and that is the blue area that's on the plan before you. This site plan amendment consists of making modifications to Tax Map Parcel A-713. That's, sorry.
This one shows it.
This parcel is situated at 10 Tara Boulevard and is comprised of 10.116 acres of land currently. The subject site is occupied by an office building with associated site improvements as depicted on the existing conditions plans that we've submitted with the application. This site plan amendment proposes to reduce the size of this parcel by 1.12 acres from 10.116 acres to 8.997 acres. The new area will partially accommodate the proposed new climate control self-storage facility, just like the former application that I presented. And as well as the former application, this application also only proposes to reduce the lot size. We're not proposing any modifications to the site being Tax Map Parcel A-713. As part of this application, we are requesting one waiver. And that waiver consists of Section 190 282B9, which requires that physical features on site and within 1,000 feet of the subdivision be depicted on the plan. We obviously, we've depicted everything on site and within proximity of the site, but we have not gone to the 1,000 feet off the subject property. Again, we are in receipt of the latest staff report for this application, and we have no objections to the staff recommendations or findings.
Okay.
The next application that we have before you pertains to the proposed subdivision. I'll just switch the sheet. Now that we've touched on the site plan amendments, what we've essentially done is taken a piece of the property from Tax Map Parcel A-798 and Parcel A-713, and we're looking to create a new lot. This lot will consist of 2.224 acres and will have access off of Innovative Way. The proposed lot number is Parcel A-1018. The new lot is created to accommodate the proposed new climate control self-storage facility, and to our knowledge, this proposed lot will meet and comply with all local ordinances. We are in receipt of the latest staff memo as it pertains to this application, and just like the other two, we have no objections with the staff recommendations and findings. As part of this application, we are also requesting two waivers. One of them pertains to Section 190 282A regarding the drafting standards, as we do have a plan of one inch equals 200 feet, and that's essentially to show the whole project because it's quite a large piece of property. We're also requesting a waiver from Section 190 282B9, which requires, again, that physical features be shown within 1,000 feet of the subject property. And then the last application that we have before you is the site plan application. This proposal consists of developing Tax Map Parcel A-1018, assuming that application is approved, into a 73,442-square-foot climate control self-storage facility. The facility will be a three-story building along the front and then four stories in the rear, so it basically has a walkout basement, if you will, on the backside of the building. The site improvements will include reconfiguring the existing parking area on site to provide better traffic flow to the facility and provide for 47 parking spaces on site, which includes two handicap-accessible spaces. We have reviewed this layout with the fire department and have made some modifications to address their concerns and comments. Essentially, what the fire department was looking for was just better access to the front of the building, so we reduced the, we actually modified some of the landscape islands in front of the buildings to striped islands so that they wouldn't, they would have unimpeded access to the front of the building. And that was done at their request. We've also worked with the city's engineering department to review our site design, as well as the stormwater management design for the project. The stormwater management for this site will be mitigated through the construction of a stormwater basin along the south side of the proposed property. The redevelopment of the parking area, so there's two watershed areas. There's a watershed area that runs, that drains to the southwest, and then there's a watershed area that drains to the southeast. The area draining to the southeast will actually have a reduction of impervious cover as a result of this project because in reconfiguring the parking area, we have a slight reduction in impervious surfaces in that watershed. So the stormwater management report shows that we meet all the city requirements, and we have successfully gone through the engineering review accordingly. Other site improvements for this project will include site lighting. We're basically utilizing existing lighting within the parking area, but we do have some building mounted lights that are depicted on the lighting plan in the package. We also have prepared a detailed landscaping plan, which shows landscaping in the islands in the parking lot and also in the stormwater management areas. The site will be serviced by municipal sewer, Penn and Chuck Water, and Natural Gas. There are wetland buffer impacts associated with this project, mainly due to the utility extensions and the construction of the stormwater mitigation. We did receive a favorable review from the Conservation Commission, and at the March 27 meeting, we obtained a special exception through the ZBA, and this plan does comply with all of the conditions imposed by both of those boards. We have reviewed the staff memo for this evening's meeting, and just like the other applications, we do not have any objections to any of the staff recommendations or findings. With this particular application, we are requesting three waivers. One of the waivers pertains to Section 190 282B9, again, with the 1,000 feet of detail, survey detail within the property limits, from the property limits, excuse me. And we're also requesting a waiver from Section 190 198 regarding off-street parking. The parking matrix for this particular use is actually equivalent to office space that requires a minimum of one space per 1,000 square feet, which equates to 73 spaces. We're proposing 47 spaces on this site, but we also have a parking agreement, or will have a parking agreement, between both the subject property A-1018 and the adjacent property A-713. So they'll build the shared parking. If you look at both of those lots together, we far, we technically exceed the parking requirements. On top of that, when you take a look at climate control self-storage, it's a very low intense use, and the parking demands are not what is, don't equate to what is outlined in the city ordinance. So staff has asked us to request a waiver from this, even though we do have a parking agreement and technically meet, you know, the intent of the regulations, I think, by the amount of parking available. But that's a waiver that we're requesting as part of this, and I'd be happy to go through the, that waiver request in additional detail. And the other waiver request is from Section 190 172C, which requires varied roof lines. We've gotten, we have received approval on this waiver on some of the adjacent structures. We did a restaurant building right next door, which we received the waiver on. We also did flex buildings across the street, which we received a waiver on from this section. And the argument or the justification for those waivers had to do with 100 through 300 Innovative Way and how, you know, the architecture that we're proposing is very similar to the surrounding structures. So those are the three waivers that we're requesting for this application. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I've spoken for a little bit of time. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Before I get to the questions, there's just a little housekeeping that the staff pointed out to me. The staff reports have, some of them have erroneous dates on them at the top. They should be June 20, all of them. So if you see other dates on there, they intended them to say June 20. And with that, I will just ask, does anybody on the board have a question?
Thank you. And you mentioned, I think you may have talked about the parking waiver that you're requesting. I'm not so much concerned about the new parcel as the old parcel, the existing parcel of land. There looks to be a fair amount of parking around that building. Can you give us a sense of, and I know you say if you take the parcels together, that there's adequate parking spaces under the ordinances. Can you give us a sense on the existing parcel, how many parking spots will be left and how many parking spots are required?
So with this proposal, Parcel A-713, which is the lot with the existing office building on it and really a quite large parking area, will have the requirement, the minimum requirement per the ordinance is 158 parking spaces. And this particular lot will have, just trying to find the note here, I'm sorry. Actually grabbed the wrong plan. So the total parking that's on this particular plan, which is the site plan, so I'm looking at Sheet 2 of 15 of the site plan set, it outlines that the total parking between the two properties would be 601 spaces, which includes the handicap-accessible spaces as well. So the parking on the site as a whole far exceeds the minimum requirements outlined in the ordinance. But what's important is how it actually functions. So this parking area in the back is primarily vacant, and, you know, the building is occupied. I think the occupancy level of that building is 90%?
Below.
So the building's about 90% occupied, and the parking area in this vicinity is essentially not used. So we are very comfortable that there's adequate parking on site. If I look at the subdivision plan, I think it specifically says how many park, how much So the, actually, the amended site plan, which is NR 1265, notes that there will be 554 spaces on that particular parcel. So again, far exceeds the minimum requirements of 158 spaces.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to point out that in the staff report with regard to the climate control storage facility, and in the correspondence and in tonight's presentation, it was referred to as Lot A-1018, but all the drawings say A-1016.
The site plan drawing, the site plan set said A-1016. We actually submitted revised plans correcting all those lot numbers today.
I just want the assessor department to know which, what to call it.
They changed, we changed the lot numbering through the review, and so that's why there was a carryover there. But they, it.
The report has the 1018 on the.
Yep. They're all.
Yeah, but not the map.
Right. But the updated map should be in the packet that just came in.
The packet that we received tonight or came in the mail?
One of them.
Okay. Great. Just want to make sure there's no discrepancy in the lot number. Thank you.
That's a very good catch.
Did my homework. Take a lesson from Steve.
I make you feel.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
They're rather minor, but I think they need to be pointed out. On the subdivision plan, one of the stipulations is about blasting. That's number seven. I think that should be on the site plan for the new parcel. Shouldn't be in a subdivision plan.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said.
Okay. Number seven, stipulation number seven talks about blasting.
Okay. Sure. This is the staff memo?
Right.
Okay.
That should be a condition. Staff could weigh in on that if they disagree.
I think that makes sense.
Makes sense, right? So also stipulation number eight on the subdivision plan talks about the applicant shall provide the public an emergency cross-access easement in the event that the lots are sold. If you look at the existing plan, the existing conditions, you'll see that there are pedestrian accesses or access through the different parcels. So I think you should have an easement for, you know, conditional easement for pedestrian access as well. You also have utilities crossing parcels. Should have an easement for utilities or drainage and anything that, you know, crosses the parcel boundaries. So I think asking for that is in order. You also talk about a parking agreement. You look at the parking. You look at the parking crossing the two parcels, 713 and the new parcel, the parcel line goes right across parking, you know, dividing parking bays. And I think you need to have, you have the parking agreement, but you also have to have some kind of easement in the event that the parcel gets sold.
Absolutely. And we have agreed to that, the easement. The agreement, I think, is the solution now because it's under the same ownership, you know, just between the two parcels. And then, just to address your questions about the easements, we do a blanket easement for utilities on the property. So I think we can certainly address all of those comments.
All right. So then you presented the site plans for the two existing parcels. So there's a minor change on parcel A798. Your change in the crosswalk. I think you know that, right? So there's a change.
Yeah, there was, there was actually an engineering comment relative to making some modifications to the crosswalk.
Okay. And parcel 713, there are some minor changes. You're looking at putting some curbing to create those islands and the curbing falls on the existing parcel. So I'm just saying technically, there are changes in those parcels.
Right. It's the matter of the sequence of the applications that we're presenting. And so the presentation was the amended site plans, then the subdivision, and then the site plan for the, so when we're doing an amended site plan, we're just talking about area swaps. When we get to the, the climate control self-storage facility site plan proposal, there is changes internally. But at that time, we're making, we're making revisions to the site from a stormwater standpoint to mitigate those changes and to design for those changes. So it all, it really has to do with the approach, but I do know exactly what you're referring to.
I understand. And the only other thing is that in A13, you said there are 554 spaces. That's what A13 been left.
That's correct.
It would have helped if you had put some counts on that site plan.
There is a, there is a parking calculation in the notes on that site plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
I couldn't tell because I, maybe the full set has, you know, the different counts. But like, this is what I had to go by and, you know, just blanks. And not that I wanted to verify what you're saying, but I just wanted to give an idea. Are you left with 554 and where are they? And I couldn't tell.
Yep.
Those are the minor comments that I have.
Thank you, Mr. DeCrane. Before we go further, is there anything that you raised that will require some sort of comment on the actual stipulations? Or is it, are you satisfied that just through the conversation that your issues are covered?
Well, I'd like to see the note, the blasting note B transferred to the site plan. in that, the blanket easement or easements should be reflected somewhere, maybe in the subdivision plan.
Okay. Do we need to consider that on a stipulation when we're putting the, when we're making the motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So maybe you can just articulate that when we, if you're not the one making the motion.
I think I'll need staff's help on that, or even the applicant to get a wording, because I don't know the, how those black easements are, what language is used for those. So maybe you can offer that chat at this time.
Yeah, I think just a generic condition that we will work with, you know, the applicants to work with staff on providing appropriate easement documents for, you know, this proposal. And that could be a condition on, I think it would be on the subdivision and the site I know we've provided staff with those documents in the past, so we'll simply, we'll really be updating them to incorporate the new parcel that we're proposing and then obviously the new site development.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. DeCrane?
Sounds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson.
I have another question. With regard to the climate control storage, is there a place for storing the trash and getting the trash picked up and removed?
So we're not proposing dumpsters on the site because what happens is people tend to store, you know, their goods and it'll find its way into the dumpster. But we do have a couple compactors within the Gateway Hills facility. So they'll like, the property management will utilize those areas for trash removal for this office space. People will be responsible for taking their own trash, which is essentially their possessions, you know, from, from the storage units themselves.
Instead of leaving it behind for the management to figure out what to do with it?
Correct. I mean, if they leave it behind, then management would have to take care of it. And there would probably be costs associated with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of any of these site plans or subdivision? Is there anybody that has questions or concerns about the presentation by the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open the public meeting, again, reserving the right, as we very well may need to open it again for specific questions. But other than that, we'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Well, I'll just say, I think it was well represented and pretty clear to me in what their intention is. And I didn't see any, you know, as usual, this is a very well-engineered project. I didn't see anything that caught my attention that would make me wonder if this, if there's something deficient in this. That's my feeling in summary. Anybody else? Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Aldo Mantenza.
Thank you. No, I mean, I think we've been prepared for this in the amendments that we've made to the ordinances, to the, well, I think we, I think we know that these types of changes are coming in the area that this is going to be in. I think it's probably consistent with this type of use for, for some kind of self-storage with the mixed use. I mean, there are a lot of apartments down there, both in this area as well as on Spitbrook Road. So I think it'll fit in with the character of that area and looks like it's probably necessary.
Thank you. Yeah, and as far as parking goes, I think these, these kind of sites are historically low, low-intensity use. I'm very comfortable that even though they're, the rule of the city requires a certain amount of parking, I think they have it more than covered. That was my sense of it. Anybody else have any comments? Or if not, we can start on motions. I think the first, I think the first thing we want to have a motion on are the site plans. The first, the first one being what's number three on our agenda. And I think we'll do the motions separately for all four of these items. The applicant, the application acceptance proposed site plan, NR2165, to show the lot line relocation for 100-326, lot 9798. Somebody care to make a motion on that? All correct me if I'm asking for the wrong thing first?
I was just looking. I think normally we do the subdivision first.
Is that what we would, I was under the impression that the, that the subdivision required amending the two site plans first? Am I right about that or?
I, here's one to give all of the same time. The procedure of patterns and followings in order, the three, four, five.
Okay, let's do that.
Approving the same ideas.
Okay. So that's fine. So we'll go with, Mr. DeCrane suggested the subdivision plan first.
Which one first?
Subdivision, the number two, the proposal to, on the subdivision. It's lot 9798 and 713.
I'll give it a try.
Okay.
With regard to new business number two subdivision, owner John J. Flatley Company, we find that it meets subdivision NRO 190138G with the following stipulations. Number one, the request is a waiver of 19282A, which sets the minimum scale for subdivision plans is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, the request for a waiver of 19282B9, which requires an existing conditions plan is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And stipulations three through nine will accept as written.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I think, and do we, do, yes.
I didn't see the aspects.
Yes. Thank you. I was just going to say that, but thank you. So we want to, I'm sorry, say what you, you were, I was thinking of something else. You were speaking to number seven? Delete number seven. And move it to the site plan. Mr. Peterson, are you, are you good with that?
Delete seven.
We want to delete seven and put it on the site plan rather than on the subdivision.
So with regard to my statement, we'll delete item seven of the stipulations as written, and we will move that to the site plan.
And then we, I think we wanted to add a stipulation, reference to Mr. DeCrane's concerns about the, that the applicant will work with staff in regard to all the easement agreements. If you're.
And add a stipulation, the applicant will work with staff with regard to the easements and write up the proper wording for that.
Thank you. Second to the motion? Seconded by Aldo Mantenza. Discussion on the motion. Mr. DeCrane, is that satisfy what you were asking for?
We should be covered, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So that is passed. Now we will go to the next one, which is the first thing listed on the new business site plans, which has a three next to it. Somebody want to take a crack at that one? Mr. Peterson, you're on a roll.
With regard to new business case number three, site plan amendment, owner John J. Flatley Company, the planning board finds that it meets what is outlined in site plan with four stipulations. The first, the request for a waiver of 282B9, which requires one to show all existing features within 1,000 feet for new subdivisions, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, the request for a waiver of 19282A, which requires drafting standards to be smaller than 50 feet to one inch, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And number three and four, as written in the original staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Do we want to add that number seven into this one? No? Okay.
We would also like to add, no.
These are just amending the issue.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so we're good.
I think we're good. Second to Mr. Peterson's motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hopper. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. That's approved. Mr. Peterson? I'm not even going to, just going to ask you. Onto the next one.
Oh, there's another one?
Oh, there's two more. So it would be the.
Are we talking about?
The fourth one on the agenda.
New business number four site plan?
Yes.
With regard to new business number four site plan, the planning board finds it meets the requirements outlined in NRO Section 190146D with 12 stipulations. Stipulation one, their request for a waiver of NRO 19279EE, which requires existing conditions to be shown, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, the request for a waiver of NRO 190-198, which requires minimum parking standards for the site, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, the waiver of NRO 190-172C, which requires varied roof lines, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then four through 12, as written in the original staff report.
This is where we want to add the blasting one, right? So that, that one that we took out, that number seven that we took out of the first one, we want to add that, I think, just as written to this.
The blasting.
Let me find that. Also, we'd like to add a further stipulation. If blasting will occur as part of any construction activities, that the applicant submit a pre-blasting and post-blasting survey. End of statements.
Thank you. Anybody like to second Mr. Peterson's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Aldo Mantenza. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Imposed, unanimous, so that passes. And the last one is number five on the list here.
Oh, that's me.
That's what happens when you volunteer.
Okay. With regard to new business case number five, site plan amendment, owner John J. Flatley Company, the planning board finds it meets the requirements outlined in site plan NRO with three stipulations. Number one, the request for a waiver of 282B9, which requires one to show all existing features within 1,000 feet for new subdivisions, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two and three, as written in the original staff report. Do we need the blasting thing too?
I don't think so, right? We just needed that one. So, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anybody second the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Aldo Mantenza. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous as well. Thank you for coming tonight. And with that, we'll move on. Everybody is good to continue. Looks like we are. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is number six, Walnut Nashville LLC. The owner of the application acceptance of proposed site plan changed the use of an existing building from courthouse to offices and to show a 13,666 square foot building addition and associated site improvements. changed the use of an existing building from courthouse to offices and to show a thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six square foot building addition and associated site improvements. Okay, good evening. Welcome, Chairman, members of the board. I'm sorry? Thank you. So, sorry, I should have done this while you were getting ready, but somebody on the, on the board want to make a motion that we accept jurisdiction of this application?
Promote.
Moved by Alderman Tenza and seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Again, good evening. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, doing business at Three Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, tonight representing the property owner twenty-five Walnut Nashua LLC. And as just read into the record, we're seeking a site plan approval for a building addition and a change of use for property in the downtown area. My job, of course, is to present the facts of, of the project and then answer any questions the board or the public may have. In the upper left is the aerial we provided of the, the site locus. What we're talking about is a, an oval-shaped, one point two acre property that is surrounded really by public roads. We have Walnut Street, we have Chestnut Street, Central, we have Factory over here, we have West Pearl. And of course, this is the former, former courthouse building. Our most immediate abutters across these public streets is Clock Tower Place to the north. Some commercial properties and businesses to the east, primarily, I always consider it the Nashville wallpaper site, you know? To the south, there is an auto retailer as well as a number of commercial buildings. The Plus Company, and then a commercial building to the west. This lot is located in the D-one downtown zoning district. It's also located in the mixed-use overlay district. And you know, the mixed-use overlay district blankets much of downtown Nashua, and it really gives the planning board much authority in terms of things of dimensional criteria and land uses. As background, as I mentioned, this is the former Nashua District Courthouse facility. I believe the building was built in the late seventies. It, it contains a two-story structure with a basement, the main body of the building, and about thirty-four parking spaces on site. Access is on Chestnut Street. This building has been vacant, I think, since about two thousand and ten, if I'm not mistaken. It's a very visible property. I'm sure most of the board members are familiar with it. Fairly flat pavement, as I mentioned, thirty-four parking spaces located in the property. What's being proposed tonight in our application is really twofold. There's really two goals to this application. The first is to change the use from courthouses to offices. And then the second is to show a proposed two-story addition along the east elevation of the site. So let me try to describe a couple of the key elements of the project. The two-story building addition measures about fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven square feet. The first floor will be for parking for employees of the facility. They'll be able to enter in on one side and out the other. And there's seventeen spaces on that at-grade first floor level. That's not a buried basement garage, it's just at-level. And then above it, the second story, is seven thousand plus minus square feet of offices, which will be linked to the existing building. Access to the curb cut will remain off of Chestnut Street. We are reconditioning the site. We're essentially repaving it. It's dated, it's been there forty years, it's in rough shape. So we're giving it a new look. We're providing new lighting, new landscaping to, to the site plan. The project adds about nineteen hundred square feet, about half the size of this room of, of, of new pavement. And so we're accounting for that with a recharge leaching basin located in the south part of the site to handle the increase of runoff coming off that new impervious area. There'll also be improvements to the existing building inside. It's going to get completely gutted. The courthouses are coming out, and new offices will be built in their place. New systems, new alarm systems, new sprinkler systems as identified in the report. Our application does include some architecturals, and I brought forth some perspective drawings here up on the board. You can see the goal is to match architecturally the new addition with the existing flat roofs. The, the height of the new addition measures about twenty-eight feet, which is consistent with the scale of the existing building. The exterior materials will be a combination of brick veneer with masonry accents. We're proposing some awning accents above some of the windows throughout the building. If you're wondering about traffic, we submitted a, a traffic report, essentially compared this new traffic to the previous use, just to try to give you a, a barometer as to how would this compare, even though it's been vacant for a number of years. And the office building is, generates about two hundred and fifty less cars a day. It's less intense of a use than it was for the courthouse facility. Our clients hope to begin construction of the addition, the renovations and the site improvements in the summer of two thousand and nineteen so that the building could be occupied in the spring of two thousand and twenty. So in summary, you know, the objective of the project was really to convert this from, you know, the former courthouse use to, to an office use. The best summary for the project itself is the site suitability report. In a mixed-use development, the applicants required to submit the site suitability report. It's a little over and above what you typically see for site plans. And what we addressed in that report is that the project is consistent. This redevelopment of this, of this vacant building is consistent with the goals and objectives of the mixed-use overlay district. We are maintaining a significant character in size and scale of the existing building and site. There are economic benefits to redeveloping a vacant building such as this. And we believe there's a long-term positive impact to the city of Nashua. No waivers, Mr. Chairman. Staff report provided by staff, conditions are, are all acceptable to us and be happy to answer any questions you or the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Petropolis. One question I have, just in looking at it. Do you anticipate that the parking requirements for that building will be satisfied right on site?
So, um, it's probably no secret, our mixed-use overlay, I'm sorry, our site suitability report identifies the prospective tenant as being Penachuck Water. It's the goal to try to get their offices back into the downtown area, Penachuck Water Works. They currently have around sixty to sixty-five parking spaces. Our site would provide fifty-two. There are nineteen street parking spaces around the oval on Chestnut and coming around Walnut, right on the inside. Nineteen spaces there that are, could be available for use, as well as the High Street Garage, which is located just a, a short walk away. So, we, the answer to the question is yes. We believe we have, we have adequate parking. We will identify some of the spaces here as visitor parking. There are still few people who like to pay their bills in person, their water bills. They do get some foot traffic, but it's not a whole lot.
So this is all the, the intention is to be all administrative stuff? There's not going to be any, any mechanical stuff?
Yeah, engineering and office. Now, this is the first step in, in a log series of steps that need to have, to happen for, to get them back into, into the downtown area. But, yes, that's the, the hope. Thank you.
Any questions?
And this may not be a question for you, but the part of that area, as it relates from Walnut Street to Factory Street, is now blocked off. There are planters there, and it's no longer in use. It, it seems like you're planning on that continuing. You're not asking the city to, to change that traffic pattern in any way?
The Alderman's talking about this little leg right here, which used to be, you know, you could do a, a racetrack kind of around this site. This has been partitioned, I believe, with Jersey barriers or, or such. They've painted it, it looks like it's got a, kind of an urban, small park feel to it now. We're not proposing to touch anything outside the property line of, of this oval.
Any other questions? Mr. Petropolis? No? I think we're good?
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor of the application or with questions or concerns about the application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I will just say, nothing could be worse than the traffic impact of the courthouse. When it was there, it was just a nightmare. Especially at like eight o'clock in the morning when there were five thousand people that were supposed to show up at the same time. It was awful, so... And, and the fact that, that's being developed, to me, is a, is a bonus for the city. That's my view of it. I don't, I don't feel quite comfortable that a place of that size would be covered by that amount of parking. But, I don't have any reason to object to it, I think. I think the presentation is reasonable, and even if people do have to go off-site to park, I think it's still a, a great asset, considering the limitations of the site. So, that's my input, anyway. Any other points of concern or questions?
Well, I mean, I agree with you, that, that parcel being downtown, there in the middle of the oval, aside from being an eyesore now, is, is just an underutilized piece of, piece of land. So, I think any, any improvements to it, especially the improvements that they're proposing, looks like it's going to be great, and it's going to attract businesses downtown. Some offices, whether it's Penachuck or somebody else, so... It's another great improvement, and it'll, it'll definitely help out economically with the city.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes? Okay. Hold, hold on. Okay, um, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion on new business site plan number six, owners being Walnut Street, Nashua LLC. That the planning board makes a determination that the plan does meet the requirements as outlined in site plan, uh, site plan NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D. With the stipulations that prior to the chair signing the plan, all commented in email from Joe Mendola, Street Construction Engineer dated, I'm sorry, did you say?
Should be June nineteenth.
June nineteenth to the nineteenth shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department as well as the stipulations two and three as outlined by the staff.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the table. Anybody want to second that motion? Seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, it's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming, and good luck with the project. Okay, so that, uh... Just a quick question for the, for the staff. So the items that were, that were not going forward tonight that were tabled, do we have to comment them into the record? Or can we just say that they're tabled until further? They're postponed to a date certain. So should I speak to them, or can we just let it be? Okay. And I will just say for the record that case number two on the subdivision plans, correct? That was tabled to a, um, date certain. The request of the applicant. Is that all, does that cover everything? Okay, so again, for the record, item seven will, has been postponed until July eleventh.
And number eight has been postponed to September twelve.
Number eight postponed to September twelve, thank you. Okay? The, the proposed agenda for the next meeting, does anybody see, on the planning board meeting for July eleventh, does anybody see any regional impact on those items? I looked them over, I did not.
I looked them over as well, I couldn't see anything.
Okay, um, I think we've covered, is there anything we haven't covered yet that we should? Okay, thank you. So any member of the board have anything that they would like to raise or discuss? All right. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so a, a motion that there were no items of regional impact.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Thank you. We good? All right, I got a thumbs up from Linda, so we can say motion to adjourn. Yes? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Houston. Let me, let me find that, that email that I, uh... We discussed earlier, but I got a little bit off track here. Is this item number four?
Well, it's related to number four. That number four is a referral from the Infrastructure Committee to the Planning Board with a recommendation to remove hatchback twenty-four.
You know, Ms., yeah, if I could, if you would, would you just explain it the way you explained it to me, so that it...
I, I was not, no.
Which will be before the board for consideration at the next meeting pertaining to a older building in the city that's taken back approximately, said back to seventeen forty-one. We're going to be preparing the pack for the board, and someone's going to be here to do a presentation to, to release that sod easement. And staff, I don't know, it might be good for the board to maybe get that expertise from the historic, historic history.
Yes, so, thank you.
Wouldn't come back to the planning board, it would just be sent to them, and we don't need any providers to support the board?
That, right, so we just want to make that recommendation to them, because it's not in their purview, technically speaking, but it's their expert, area of expertise. Yeah, so I will, I'm, I will suggest that we do exactly that. We go through, maybe we can communicate with Mr. Weber via email to pass that through, since he's the representative to Historic Commission, and we invite them to, and that correspondence will include the dates of the upcoming meetings. They're not going to have to come back to us, they're going to have the opportunity to give their feedback to the, at the other meetings at the upcoming in July and August, I guess. Thank you. So, yep, so we'll make that, I guess, if we need a motion for that, that's my motion. I don't know if we do, but...
So moved.
Thank you. And all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. I made it, and Mr. Peterson seconded it. And what else am I forgetting? We all good? All right. Motion to adjourn. I'm making it. Seconded by Mr. Tenza. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.